So I will call the meeting to order and document the time of six thirty-two. Oh Brenda, Brenda I think is exiting, entering, entering state, oh no, you're not her.
Sorry, sorry to disappoint you.
How do you type? Alright, so if you can stand and join us please for the pledge. Awesome, thank you. If you wanna come and find a seat in here, we'll, I don't know if you wanna sit on the floor, we got a couple extra chairs. We only need a couple extra chairs, right? Join us there, there's a couple, there's a couple in the other rows, we should be good. Alright. So, so we do this so that we, how many of you go to school here, all of you? So you do mindfulness in class, right, now, right? So, we do this on a school board for the same reason you do it in class. I just came from work and I'm all wound up. And I need to calm myself down so I can concentrate on what we're doing. So we're gonna have Tori join us and lead us in the mindfulness and hopefully calm us all down so we can do good things for the school. With any luck.
Do any of you wanna lead mindfulness, like you do in your class?
Good.
Would you lead it for us? Yeah? That's great, I love this, okay. Excellent.
Do you wanna come right up here?
There's a chair right there. Sit and lead us through it, just like you do in school.
You just gotta remember we got folks over here that need to hear you, okay? Are you gonna calm me down?
Awesome, you're gonna be great at this, you do it just like you do in school.
Just like you do in school, perfect. Start us in and lead, lead our mindfulness for us? And do what? What do you do in, what do you do in your classroom a lot?
Um, we would sit and like coloring, like, we just get, I said, we just color.
You can't, you just have to calm down, so maybe you can, we can have Tori lead and...
Okay. Yeah, you don't breathe with me? We can do it together, okay? Do you do colors? Do you try to see colors in your head?
We just, we just like put up a brown one.
And just so breathe, okay. Alright, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna sit, find a nice comfortable seat. And we're gonna sit up and we're gonna take a nice deep breath in. And then we're gonna breathe out. So our in-breath is that focused breath arriving right here. And then we breathe out into our bodies. It just gets us inside. So take a deep breath in. And breathe out. And use our breathing to arrive here from where we've come, right in our seat. So breathe in. We're gonna breathe in the focus of community. And how when we're all together and doing things together, great things can happen. So breathing in, community. Breathing out, acceptance. And our focus as we breathe in again is making sure we're here together for the best of all people in the community of Winuski. For the better of all families, students, and community members. And on your next exhale, we'll get ready to be here. Thanks for joining us.
Alright. Thank you Tori. And what was your name?
Izzy.
Izzy, thank you Izzy. Appreciate that. Alright, um, so if, where's Annalise? You guys could decide on timing and whatever works, okay, whatever works for you is good. Alright, so, we have... Yep, so first, uh, there we go. First piece, any agenda adjustments or revisions anybody would like to see? I do have one add. And that is to add a discussion session on organizing a parent forum. When we would do it, who we would invite, and try to figure out who will go and find who to bring them in so we can have a discussion. The discussion's gonna revolve around, we'll get to that in a minute, is, you know, how do we, how do we bring the community more in getting engaged? And we'll talk about that more, so we'll add that down in Governance Processes Eight, or Community Engagement.
That whole section, probably a third bullet under eight A.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. Okay. Anything else there? Alright, so tonight then the first thing on the rest of the agenda then is focus on learning. This is our third installment, the Tier Two.
Tonight we, we continue on our multi-tiered systems of support and last month we did Tier One and this month we'll be talking about Tier Two. And then in December you will hear the final tier. What I wanna reiterate that I talked about a little bit in the last two months actually is kind of how we got here. In that we have added a lot of supports in the last four years in the form of some of the things listed there like English language learning and special education. Mostly in the form of staff. And now we're in, part of our development where we're developing that cohesive web of supports. And having it articulated throughout the organization so that all staff know, and eventually parents will also know, how, how when they see that their child is, or their student is not learning, how do they bring, bring that to the attention of the right people? And then how do we figure out ways that we can tend to that issue that's happening and make sure that we get the proper supports into place? Those are broken into two pretty broad areas in terms of academics and then behavioral. So, again, to, to keep kind of reiterating what this looks like, the Tier, Tier One is the universal, which is really applied to all students. So it's things like the items we do around food security, like having food available and free meals to all students. In the classroom, the snacks, and then also augmenting that with some other food security programs. Or our school-wide expectations. Those are all examples of Tier One or universal interventions. And today we're getting into the supplemental or targeted. And as I mentioned last month supplemental means that it doesn't mean a student is missing the core instruction that's happening in reading or math, for example. But they may be getting more instruction to help them with those skills outside of the classroom, or even in the classroom but in a different way. So we're gonna start with JFK and they're gonna come up and introduce themselves and talk to you about the development of Tier Two in our elementarys.
Good evening, I'm Angela Molten, I teach second grade at JFK Elementary in Winuski.
Hi, I'm Sarah Murphy, I'm the second or fifth grade school counselor at JFK.
So as Sean said, the Tier Two interventions happen after that first dose of universal support that all students receive. And Tier Two interventions are really child-specific. That either focus on behavior, academic, or health-related needs, or social-emotional needs that a child might have. Students can only, thank you, be put into Tier Two after a teacher has done due diligence with the teacher talk, met with the team, and tried something with fidelity for four to six weeks. That said, a teacher might not move into a Tier Two intervention until they've tried maybe even two, three, four different in-class interventions. I'm gonna briefly walk you through it because I know you'll have access to these slides later. But essentially, once a student is referred to the chat team, that's our Child Assistance Team, that team meets and creates a plan. Our Child Assistance Team, our chat team, is made up of some four standing members, they're listed up there, as well as invited members, parents, or any specific adult that works with the student that's not a standing member of our team. There are two goals of this team and the meetings that we have. The first is to create an action plan, my next slide will get into what that means. The second is to set a date for a follow-up meeting where we can really hold ourselves accountable and say, are these Tier Two strategies and interventions working? Do we need to tweak them, or do we need to move on? Creating the action plan, I want to spend just a moment talking specifically to that because that's how our students are going to access these Tier Two strategies and interventions. So once a student is referred to the chat team by their classroom teacher, a chat team member becomes the advocate for this student. That means that the chat team member gathers as much information and data on that student as they can. Specifically pertaining to health, behavior, social, emotional, and academic. They then create an, a case summary that is shared with the chat team Friday morning at our standing chat meeting. The team then goes into a really great think-tank moment where we come up with as many possible interventions as we can. And we really don't hold back, we put everything out there that we can think of. We then look at all of those possibilities and decide what are the strategies, the interventions, those Tier Two approaches we are going to try with these students, keeping in mind the function of the student's behavior and the four domains listed, health, behavior, social, emotional, and academic. We try to be as specific as possible with these goals. You can see towards the bottom I did put an example that I pulled right from one of our action plans. And it is, student will receive small group literacy support using the Fontes and Pennell leveled literacy intervention, once a day for thirty minutes for six weeks with instruction provided by Jody Weimer. So our chat plans include who will provide the intervention, what the intervention is, the duration, the frequency. And we also have a space where we say, we, how we will know if the intervention is successful when we come back as a chat team and review the student's plan. So, as Sarah said, there are the four components. And the academic as well as the behavioral pieces are really tied to data that we can really quantitatively look at. However, we don't overlook the fact that there are children maybe with social and emotional factors that can have access to Tier Two interventions as well, such as students with anxiety may access the in-school counselor for services to support them in the classroom. Or students who maybe have vision or hearing loss can be screened by the nurses anytime to rule out academic things that might be happening because of those losses or to rule that out before we move to a Tier Two intervention that might not fit them. For example, I had a student who I was noticing some difficulty with and sent for a vision test to find out this child needs glasses. So some of those things might be met through the nurses. There are also students with the autism, autism spectrum disorder who might benefit from lunch bunch, social thinking groups, and things like that. As well as academic and behavioral supports by the coaches. And at this level, as always, we're matching specific strategies, like Sarah said, to their needs. So, here's some great pictures that Sarah took of some of the things that can happen for students. So some of the other interventions, Amanda B., our behavior coach, Babcock, she might be able to observe classroom teachers to see what actions and moves we are using in the classroom that may be really supporting kids behaviorally or perhaps triggering them or offering suggestions for teaching styles and strategies to support children who have behavioral needs. They also, the behavior team can offer the check-in, check-out, or Chico system. And help with planned breaks throughout the day. The math and literacy coaches, again, can observe teachers for techniques and strategies and offer ideas for educators. Because you can't do this all alone, so having those supports really help us, help our students. And then lastly, Jody Weimer does those small strategic intervention groups for six weeks or so, like Sarah said, that provide specific targeted instruction. And so, the function of the chat team, as I mentioned, is to create the plan, but then to come back together and review the plan and based on our data, decide what the next steps are. And so really, there are three options. We can look at the data and say, excellent, the intervention worked, we can exit the student from their chat plan. We might look at the data and say, you know what, we think we need to keep this going a little bit longer, we need to tweak it just a little bit. Let's redo the plan, come back again in four to six weeks. And then in some cases we say, you know what, I think we're ready to move on to Tier Three, which you'll learn about next month. Thank you.
I'm Amanda, counselor, middle school guidance counselor.
Hi, my name is Lisa Italiano, I'm the middle school reading specialist.
So, in the middle school, we have our two tier supports on the EST process that we're gonna talk about. The EST stands for Educational Support Team and the actual plan that we refer to is called the EST. WIN stands for What I Need, and that is provided for all students across, across the middle school. And more and more we're using data to help us figure out very, very specific WIN groups that students are in. And Lisa will talk more about that. So the EST team, as Sarah said, is an interdisciplinary and weekly meeting. Standing members, including the nurses, a, a classroom teacher from each team, both Journey and Nexus, guidance counselor, the middle school principal, the reading specialist, Lisa Behini, and the behavior coach. I might be missing somebody. Okay, so we are looking at students from multiple perspectives and across settings. When students are not progressing or thriving with regular classroom instruction, that's Tier One, or for other identified behavioral reasons, students are brought up as part of kick-tack and regular classroom teachers are implementing pieces that they would do in the context of the classroom. Pulling kids together for smaller groups, moving around for one-to-one conferences, okay. If the classroom, if the strictly classroom teaching involved proves ineffective to improving student data, the teams follow up by recommending students stay the attention of EST. I normally get that information. Families are also made aware that we're in meeting about the student and extra supports that may be coordinated through EST. Oh, I do? Oh, thank you. Okay, data, data is gathered from assessments and used to group specific students for targeted, specific, small group instruction. Thank you.
And speaking of data, this is some information, just to give you a view of what the breadth of our student achievement looks like right now. This is Fall 2017 Fast Reading Data. Winuski began using the FAST system as of last year, prior to that the assessment had been the Reading Plus system. A decision was made to add the FAST assessment for greater comparability with other assessments and other areas across the United States. And also because it gave more detailed information that would help us with more, help us more with instruction. So I'm gonna read these little levels to you because I know it's very light and hard to see. So, and there is, can you see the dividing line between the blue and the purple at the very top? So the blue is like one, twelve o'clock to one o'clock almost. So that's the percentage of students above grade level. Eighth grade, above eighth grade level, on eighth grade level is orange, seventh grade level is yellow, sixth grade yellow is green. Which we look at those four together as really kids being in a fairly good place at this time of the year. Granted, two years below grade level sounds like a lot, but students are gonna make good progress this year with their reading and we're gonna hope to see those numbers get bigger and the numbers up here at the end of the graph or between, if you will, six and twelve o'clock, continue to decrease, okay? So then, you can, are you, can you all see this well enough or do you want me to keep reading? Okay. So based on this data, you can see that we have extremely different needs across every grade level. So, what, the decision was made that we would begin an intervention plan this year, and it's called What I Need, WIN. And the idea was that we really saw the need, just as you heard from JFK, for targeted, small group instruction in order for students to make more successful growth. And we used that data, we used Reading Plus data, and we used math data and behavioral data. And this began last summer at the work at Eagle Rock that leadership people went to. And Melissa Minzer and Andrea Wieland worked very hard with all that data to form the first round of groups that we're working, we worked with for the first six weeks of school. Just as it was described, it's a six-week rotation of groups. And then after that point, we had done an assessment, a specific language assessment with all students in the middle school. And we used that data, it's called a developmental spelling assessment, and we used that data to create the second series of groups which are focused specifically on how students understand words and language because it's such an important piece of information to help them improve as readers. And the next step, the next six-week session is going to be, we're gonna prioritize mathematics instruction because we realize that those are two of the main areas and in our spiral graph they go up along with everything else to support student growth. And the only thing I wanna mention here is that for the first one, we had Melissa and Andrea as the leadership team. The second set of groups I worked on and with the teachers of course and Kate. But the third group, prioritizing math instructions, we don't have a mathematics specialist at the middle school. So this is a capacity issue and it will be something that the teams will have to take up and the teachers will have to find the time to work on going through that data, looking at the students' mathematics scores, and making the groups at that point in time. That's it. Thank you.
So I am the, my name is Stephanie Hackett, I'm the tutor coordinator for the Winuski High School. So I'll talk about the different avenues that students can go through in order to seek further support in their academics. So we have beyond core support tutoring. This is tutoring that happens during the day. It is referred to, staff can refer students for tutoring. They can also be referred through EST, which supports the Tier Two. And our students can refer themselves if they feel they are needing a little bit extra support. We also have a program where volunteer tutors come into the school and they can help support our students. Our community partners through the years have been United Way, St. Michael's, as well as community tutors and some Rice High Schooler students as well. So after-school supports, these happen after school, Monday through Thursday, from three to four o'clock. They currently are math, science, technology, and then I do a general academics. During this time, students can come in and get individualized support on their homework. And they, I'm starting to connect those with the GX, to see, they fill out some surveys every grading period. And it's, that way we can track kind of what GX progression that they're really honing in on during this time. This core support also helps students on academic probation. If they are in athletics, if they need further support, they can, they're, they need to come to this core support twice a week in order to be, in order to participate in the sports season. We also have two Rice, Rice High School students that volunteer during this time as well. I went through some data and looked at, there were a hundred and seventy-seven students, some of these students were reoccurring. So it's not just individual students that we're looking at. And this graph just shows how much of the time they're really spending that is proficient during this time, partially proficient, or how much time students are really spending and working on other things or not using the time as wisely as they should be. We also have math skills. This is, runs three to four o'clock on Friday. I realized that a lot of students were seeking math support to help strengthen their math skills and to close the gap. A lot of students are needing a little extra support. So currently, I am doing this with another volunteer from United Way. And I created this program with the math team, we adjust some strategies. So we realized that Khan Academy was a really good way for students to access a little bit more math support that's more individualized for the students. So they can kind of close the gap and refer back to strategies and math lessons that they previously learned or will be learning in the math program. And this is, this is in process, we are linking up with Refugee Outreach Club. This is a club that's a 501(c) certified tax-dipped charity nonprofit. It was created by a high schooler, Natalie Meyer, she's a sophomore at CDU. And we're hoping to really support services for our ELL high school students. So this can be mini lessons or drop-in facility where these students can get a little extra support in their homework as well. And there's the Winuski Memorial Library. They have after-school support Monday through Thursdays from six to nine. And they have high school students that can drop in in any high school. We see a lot of Winuski high schoolers. There's, they also help support in college application as well.
I know we're going through a transition phase right now with some people not on proficiency and all that, so can someone just kind of talk about that?
Whoever's gonna respond, if you can come up, just so they...
Yeah, I'll respond, Lee and we're the principal. So the math program really worked closely with Stephanie in designing this. And our math program is a proficiency-based program fully. It has been now for three years, this is the third year. And so the supports that are, that they're getting are supports based upon where they are in their skills and where they need additional support in their skills for proficiency. So it really, that's really well linked together.
And not to grill you, apologize, but is the Khan, because is the Khan Academy maps one-to-one with the concepts with the proficiency?
I don't know how to answer the question except that the Khan Academy, the, the math, the math department would be identifying where the student is with their skills and they would, I would assume, connect with what part of the Khan Academy program, what, what pieces would support this student's continued growth. So they're linking it directly from the program that we have for our, our instruction with pieces of the Khan Academy that would best be, most be beneficial for the students. I believe that's accurate.
Yeah, so pretty much if a lot of our students, for example, are on pre-algebra, there is a pre-algebra unit on Khan Academy. And we can even target within pre-algebra what skills those students need that reflect what the skills they need that are learning or they need to fill in to close that gap within the math lab.
Thank you.
The one piece I noticed that was, I think, different between the elementary and the middle school versus the high school presentation was just one word and that is, I think, can't remember who mentioned, Stephanie, I think, you mentioned it right at the beginning that students come to us, or teachers, seeking help. Where the elementary and the middle school were a reach-out from the staff. Is there a reach-out in a high school? Because I know in a high school you're gonna tend to not have people come looking for help potentially. And so, I, I, it was probably one of them. But is there, is there a way to do that, reach-out?
Yeah, so there, there is an EST process and a teacher talk process at the high school as well where students are being identified. And they're being recommended by staff. Sometimes those students are being referred to Stephanie for additional tutoring support. Sometimes teachers just recognizing students without going through the EST process, recognizing students that are having some struggles are reaching out directly to Stephanie as well and saying, we need some additional support with these students. And sometimes students are referring themselves. So the difference I think is that we have, we have other pieces of the process in place for staff referral. And being at the high school level, students are also advocating for their own growth and learning and they know what they need.
Yeah, I knew that was a piece of it, but you're not always gonna get that, so I was hoping that was a piece of it. Okay, thank you.
I think the other part is there's, there's a structural challenge at the high school level.
level. At different, elementary and middle, there's built-in teams, there's built-in team time, right? So Nexus and Journey at the middle school, they have time several times a week where they can sit down and talk about kids. And at the elementary, grade-level teams have time that's built into the schedule. At the high school, where teachers are, you know, they're, the only real solid team link we have is the advisory. And that doesn't always necessarily match up because the advisory, the advisor doesn't always teach the student in a class or has less experience, so they may not know those academic needs. So it's something that we're still trying to figure out.
All right, great. Thanks. Because I tie that to the, you know, the graduation rates at four, five, and six years and being flexible there, but trying to interject as early as possible to, to capture that. So, all right, great. Any other, any other questions, thoughts?
I'd really appreciate the team approach that everybody has on looking at students so that it's a totally holistic kind of approach. And I'm sure that, that also that team approach is building morale among teachers because you feel the support. So I'd say continue the good job and appreciate the support that you have for our students.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. I was going to say, don't, don't be bashful about bailing. And thank you for coming and spending the time. All right. So next piece on the agenda here is public comments.
I'm Valerie Visconti, representing Parents and Youth for Change. It looks like I'm the only one here with that group. I just wanted to say briefly that I was an educator for 40 years and special educator and it was so great to hear what's going on here. I'm really impressed with what you're doing in Winuski.
Thank you.
So I basically just want to ask that as a reminder, you've given us disaggregated sheets of data regarding absenteeism and tardiness for other school years, but we need the data from 2016, 2017. So if we could get that, we would really appreciate it.
All right.
In regard to the pilot bus program.
Something that just raw, in a raw form at this point?
Yeah, but that's not what they're on.
Oh. Do we have the data they're asking for?
We don't have it disaggregated, no.
Okay. So that data is not available as requested, apparently. That's what it sounds like.
Okay, well, what was the, there was a data sheet from past years.
Yeah, it's, it's not that it can't be done. It's more a matter of organizational capacity to do the work at this point because we have been going through tremendous change this year with health plan changes, with teacher and support staff negotiations, and now heading into our new budget season. And in addition to us later in the agenda, trying to figure out whether we can afford to run the winter transportation pilot. You know, in addition to all the day-to-day things that many people who would be involved in that, but primarily our data manager, I have not put that at the top of the priority list for somebody to complete.
Okay. Is there any way that we can help in this, to have this happen?
No, because it's, it's confidential information that needs to be cleaned.
Right.
And disaggregated and then provided.
Right.
So that's something that our data manager would do.
Right, well, thank you very much.
It's certainly on the, in the scope.
I understand. There's a list.
Well, it's the nightmare of the contract negotiations extending out and taking a lot of time to get the benefits going. So appreciate you guys understanding.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How will this data inform, what will this data inform?
What does it inform?
Yeah.
Well, it was, it's been broken down into where students live, no names are given.
Right.
Where students live in Winuski, what grade they're in, if they've been tardy, absent, the number of days totaled, and so on.
So it's based on absenteeism and tardism, based on location and where they're coming to school?
Right, correct. And age, grade level.
Okay.
And it's really very informative as to giving the whole picture.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask how you, for the notes, how do you spell your last name, Valerie?
Oh, yes. V as in Victor.
Yep.
I.S.C.O.N.T.I.
T.I.
Three syllables.
I almost got it.
Oh, you got an E, right?
I added E at the end.
Okay, and you got Valerie, right?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think, do we do the consent agenda?
Not yet. That's next. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none. Consent agenda, I would accept a motion to accept a consent agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion?
One thing I wanted to point out, since you were here for representing our parents around transportation, it looked like the bids are due November 6th.
Monday.
Which was Monday, right? And so do we, as a board, know when we're, what we'll be doing with that?
We should have something tonight for review of that.
We do.
Yep. All right, any other discussion on the consent? All right, all those in favor accepting the consent agenda as is written? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So moving down then into executive limitations, the budget timetable, next.
So in your packet, you had the updated budget timetable for the upcoming budget season. So as you'll notice, Monday, November 27th, which will be upon us before we know it, the baseline document will be distributed to board members electronically to give you a few days with it before Wednesday, the 29th, when we will come and do our opening presentation with, about starting with the ends. And then, as you can see, talking about potential increases and decreases and giving you all of the context, data around special ed, English language learning, operations, and technology. The following week, on the 6th, we come back for our second where there will be a continual refining, sharpening of the pencil week to week. And you will typically see some changes in that baseline document based on some discussion at the board level and also at the administrative level. The 13th is a board meeting, but also we'll have some time allotted for budget. It's also the night where you will be doing some board education around the state ed funding system. So you're going to be getting a lot of budget stuff that night. And then what, whatever, that, that date we set to possibly do preliminary revenue and the three-year comparison, if, a big if, if we have the numbers to actually produce that. And then we plug in, we always plug in a meeting if needed. So the, the next Wednesday, which school is still in session until that Friday, the 22nd, would be a meeting and we'll decide on the 13th whether that's needed or not. Then the 3rd of January, when we come back in the new year, would be typically where we have a lot more of our numbers, like the CLA, the equalized pupil count, revenues are a little more clear. That's when we're able to give you a much better forecast on tax impact of the, of the expense budget.
So in other, Alex, just for a reference point, the first couple of them is all on the spending side. We don't have any of the revenue numbers at all until we start getting, in, deep into December. And then we can put them both together and look at the tax impact after, after that. So it comes kind of piecemeal, you know, we don't get all the answers upfront, but...
And then on Wednesday, the 10th, which is also a regular board meeting, is where we have it penciled in for your adoption of the budget. That is a tight timeline because then we have to turn around all the printing of the documents and get the annual report ready for distribution to the, to the community in the statutory required timeline. And then you can kind of see some of those other dates down there in terms of distribution of the annual report, the budget flyer that the board puts out to all households a week or so before the budget vote in March. Any questions on the, on the timetable?
I'm assuming these are all 6:30?
Yes.
The, we've done well, last year's budget, we were open from a contract negotiation standpoint. We were unfulfilled. This one here, we, with a two-year contract, we know from a salary perspective, benefits perspective, where that stands. So, you know, question marks from the expense side become limited. It then becomes juggling of the staff within what we already have. If there's new needs, how that, how that gets juggled around, so.
So one thing I wanted to add to this was just to give you a, a document that came out August 30th from the Agency of Ed, Chief Financial Officer, Emily Byrne. And this will be for your perusal leading into the budget cycle. All I'm going to tell you is you flip over to the charts on the back and you go all the way down to the bottom right and you see 47.3. What that represents is 47.3 million dollar shortfall in the ed fund that is projected. So there has been some kind of kicking the can down the road, so to speak, and compensating with other funds over a number of years, that now we're in this situation where we have this shortfall in the ed fund. And what that calculate, they calculate that to means five to eight cents on the tax rate off the top for a level budget year to year, which is a tremendous impact on communities. So this is the challenging landscape that we're all walking into this budget cycle. And I'm sure there will be more information coming out of the Agency of Ed in the upcoming month or so as we start moving through this. But sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but it's going to be a tough one, folks. If it were easy, we wouldn't be here. Right.
All right, well, let's, Lisa lays it down up front?
Yep.
All right, well, thank you for that. See where that goes. And that'll be, that'll be in the background of the budget, the first pass that we get anyway, so we'll...
It will be, and I think it'll also be a good kind of discussion point with Susan Holson when she comes from the SBA and does her piece on the state funding formula. You'll, you'll get a lot of good information on how we fund education, where that money comes from, and the kind of historical use of the, of the general fund and the, and the ed fund. And I think that'll make this document make a lot more sense to you.
Anything will help.
I hope.
Anything will help. All right, good. Any other questions on budget timelines? All right. Next item here in the, in the executive limitations, the monitoring report. And this one is superintendent succession. This is something we hope we never have to invoke, but if something happens to our superintendent, are we covered in the near term and how do we move forward toward the long term? We've, through our policy governance work, this is one of the things we put on the superintendent to make sure we are covered based on things we hope never happen. But hope is never a great plan, so that's why we have a little more detail. So, any questions on the...
The, the only changing from the prior one that was approved a few years ago really are not substantive. On the first page, at the very bottom, we now refer to our, our plan as continuous improvement plan opposed to adequate yearly progress. So that's just a name change. And then in pages two and three, I just modified middle high school principal to co-principal since we have those new titles for Leon and Kate. Other than that, nothing has really changed because we, we made some of the updates with the change in the elementary principal in the last go-around.
Okay, and then just as a reminder or a refresher, we are going through all eight of the executive limitations this year. We review and accept in the same meeting where we don't, we used to do them one, except them in the meeting after. This will now give us in September, when we do the superintendent evaluation each year, a view of all eight of our policies to, from an, from an evaluation standpoint. So thought this again was, was well-done, thoughtful in its breadth of issues, so. Any other questions, comments, discussions, thoughts? All right. I would accept a motion to accept a monitoring report 2.5 under emergency superintendent succession. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Great, thank you, Sean. That was, again, very well-done. Okay, item seven, winter transportation under the board management.
Want to pull that up with us, Rebecca?
Slide right up here, we miss you. You can grab it.
I'm right next to you because I was, we don't see you that often.
Okay. So as, it's been continually updated via my reports and/or some discussion...
Do you want a copy for Valerie?
Yeah, sure.
I can get it for me.
Sure.
Discussion at public comments and so forth. We modified the bid. So it was, instead of being 59 days in its original bid, to have begun on December 4th after Thanksgiving, it would begin January 16th, I believe. So it's down to 39 days of service. And we received one bid. We have petitioned the state for a waiver, which you need to do when you get less than two bids, three bids?
Three bids.
Three bids.
Yep.
And we are very confident that they will give us the waiver like they have in, in other situations, but we have not received it yet because of the short timeline of getting the bid on Monday and tonight. So that would be a contingency in this.
As is approval by the South Burlington School Board.
So let me walk you through the actual bid. It is from the South Burlington School District. They, in, our, our bid estimated about 300 students. We are talking about students who live more than three-quarters of a mile from the school. Most of those, very, very high percentage of those students live down in what's our west end, so Mallett's Bay, Elm Street, Hickok, that area. So this would serve those students. It would not be making runs on the other end of the city. It would not be heading up towards St. Mike's. It would not be going down through the Rotary and Winuski Falls. There will not be door-to-door service. It will be two or three stops where students come and congregate, get on the bus. And there would be two buses and they would each do two loops to get that many students to the school. So that's...
Can I just, is that what the, the parent groups have been talking about, like they're aware of that? Is that a change from the way we thought it might be happening or...
It is not, we never got into the logistics of it because that's really where we rely on the bus professionals to decide.
Okay.
You know, because you've got traffic patterns, you've got all kinds of traffic laws you've got to abide by with buses and so forth.
Okay, great, thank you.
So they came up with a, a daily rate of 1710 for the two buses. And there's a fuel price there. And then really the important stuff, if you turn over to the next page, this is contingent upon the South Burlington School Board approving it on their end next week. And I am in touch with David Young and have offered to attend that meeting if he deems that necessary. And then on the, the third page, that's the breakout of the costs that they submitted. So the 17, 1710 per day is higher than if we would be providing transportation to and from school every day of the year. You know, per bus, because you get some economies of scale if you're doing that much. When you're trying to hire people to just come in and just do two to four hours of work a day, you know, you're not... you know, you're not realizing any kinds of economies of scale there. And for only thirty-nine days a year. So, the price, the price is a bit higher. It's actually lower per day than, um, the one bid that we received from, uh, another company in the summertime. So, in the end, uh, the total cost for this period is a little over sixty, or sixty-one and a half thousand. Our recommendation to the board at this point is to, uh, approve this with the contingency upon the South Burlington School Board approving it.
Understood.
And the, the waiver being approved. It is a little bit over the budget that we had of fifty thousand dollars, but we believe that we can manage that additional, uh, eleven and a half within our, within our budget to make it happen. The other piece that I would remind the board is that this also then will need to be incorporated into our budget for F Y nineteen if you decide to do that again, um, for next year. So, which would be more, obviously, than sixty-one thousand.
Under the assumption that we start in November and go to?
Under the assumption that we'd be offering more days like we had planned this year, yeah.
And then, you know, yeah, we can have the discussions at that point on the useful window that that happens to be, but that's, that's a discussion for the next budget cycle.
The only thing I would add and then open up for questions and discussion, um, is that I have been in touch with Infinite Colclager a couple of times, uh, between last month's board meeting and now, and made it, uh, very clear that we need Parents and Youth for Change's help. And specifically, we're gonna need their help in supervision with kids at the bus stops in the morning. We're gonna need, uh, some parent volunteers that will need to go through background checks, um, that would be willing to, um, ride buses. We're gonna need a lot of cooperation and support from our community, and Parents and Youth for Change has been leading this charge and, and, uh, they, they have articulated that they're fully committed to providing that support.
Alright. And that level of support needs to happen, right? I mean, that, it, there, we have to have some adult supervision on the bus?
You don't have to, but we want to.
I wouldn't.
Because those buses are gonna be full, and, um, they're gonna be full, and a lot of stuff happens on buses. There's a lot of potential behavior issues, even though it's gonna be a pretty short ride in comparison to a lot of places. One of the biggest concerns that we had within the organization is kind of coping with the fallout when the kids get to school. You know, so the reports of what happened on the bus, the, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Are there gonna be large age differentials on the bus, or is this truly targeted towards?
We cannot delineate age, you cannot basically discriminate about who can and cannot get on the bus. The only, um, the only kind of, um, limit we can set is we're saying that students who live outside a certain distance are the only ones that can ride the bus. Now, monitoring and enforcement of that?
What type of commitment, um, what we know about the support for the buses to make sure the students are safe on the bus and that this is running smoothly from partnership from change, or Parents for Change, is, is that, is that i- an ongoing conversation?
It's been, it's been an ongoing conversation, and, you know, I was hedison, I was reticent to jump into that with them until we actually thought, knew we were gonna do this.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're, we're ready.
Okay.
As, you know, as soon as a decision is made, you know, Infinite and I are, are, uh, ready to go, and he's ready to, to get people mobilized, and I'm ready to kind of give him the, the directions of what needs to be done.
Okay.
And we'll have to start incorporating the, the bus folks into it so they can also offer their expertise in that.
Alright, Alex?
As if we were gonna move forward, so take this with a grain of salt. Seems like this is a good opportunity to make sure that we have the data, track the students who are staying here for retention and gra- for retention and graduation, and also academic performance. But it also seems like if we are gonna get the parents involved, it would be great to get them involved with the tier-one support of the heart and the sharing, all that, as maybe part of that training for them to get on the bus so that we can extend kind of a, a knowledge, kind of spreading of the knowledge of what we're doing at the schools. And hopefully, they can model that behavior as time goes on. Maybe we don't need as much parents because they know that, you know, this extends not just within the walls here on that, and, and just to make maybe training a little bit easier for us, instead of trying to come up with a whole new.
And the other thing we've talked about is student leadership.
Right.
You know?
Self-monitoring of some, to some degree.
Yeah, well, and having some of our older students.
That's what I was just like, high school students, like being, as I'm looking at you guys, you know, just thinking, um, in terms of mentorship or community-based, uh, volunteer, you know, of being able to shoulder that because they should have the heart information also, but that was a great comment of being able to generalize our, our social and emotional well-being and wellness, you know, extending out beyond these walls and into this bus system so that we as a community can support each other.
Expectations are the same.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, um, I, I do believe, you know, with Parents for Change, I feel like this is the one thing our parents have asked of us, you know, and really have, have stayed very consistent with it, so to support that, um, with bringing wellness into it as well is, is essential for what we're doing, right? I mean, yeah.
And then hopefully, it'll be also part of our kind of communication, because I think one of the hardest parts is trying to get these things out to our parents, and maybe this is a me- another mechanism, form of me- for us to do that. There's a, yeah.
Alright, good. Any other, uh, any other thoughts, comments?
Oh, and if you need support at the Burlington, like, if, if they say that they want you to go, if it helps for someone from the school board, I will be happy to.
Just out of Burlington?
Just out of Burlington, um, that's next week, right?
Yeah.
So, I'll make sure I'll clear that up, if, just shoot me an email.
Okay.
Same here.
Yep.
So.
I was also just thinking, um, about a, i- if it made sense to do sort of a in-house or, uh, something, you know, sort of, sort of kickoff of like, since it is a new thing, like, we're start, it, w- once it gets approved, we're starting this and having everyone together to sort of get on the same page as much as possible, so that it really is sort of a community effort to, I don't know.
Yep.
We can help with that.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, any other comments or thoughts?
I hope that it gets passed because this is something that our parents have been wanting, and, uh, it was unfortunate we had to put this off. Uh, because in my head, I was also thinking that, um, would, would there have been another budget item that we had approved that we would have put off because of the situations, financial situations that we were in? And I just wanna communicate that our parents' voice does matter, um, and this is a big undertaking. This is a huge, it's more than just the money. There's a lot of details that's going into this, and I feel like, I hope that it happens so that we can communicate out that it matters to us, what matters to our kids and what matters to our families, yeah.
Alright. Good, um, so with that, I would accept a motion to accept the transportation bid pending the waiver to the state and the approval of the South Burlington, uh, School Board next Wednesday to move forward.
So, moved.
Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries, four zero. Alright, and I know Matt, Matt, we're here, he's expressed the same, uh, same interest, so. Uh, Rebecca, thank you for your work on that.
Yes, thank you.
Sean too, Valerie, see where this, see where this thing goes, yes, thank you.
Good night.
Good night. See a lot of you.
Okay, uh, moving down in, into, um, governance processes after this, um, we did have the ad for the community engagement discussion. On, on the bottom of this, we will start, however, with our student report to the board. Who's gonna start?
I guess I will.
Alex got it tonight, alright.
Um, so, it's November, it's getting colder.
Get your gloves on.
It's even cold in here.
My house is really cold, like, I had to wear a jacket too soon. But, yeah, Thanksgiving break's coming up, everyone's getting to that, um, lazy, laid-back mood. And, um, I guess we're starting with the elementary. Um, I met with the elementary principal, um, today at eight, and they just told me about like a general overview of what they're doing. So, they did this, um, new, um, thing where they present heart jars. If students like follow expectations of all throughout heart, uh, they get one gram for each student, and they already completed their whole box that they s- sent from like the principal's office.
The heart monitor.
Yeah, the heart monitor, yeah. And in three months, I'm surprised, they already finished it and they got their first celebration. That's cool. Um, they're also, to help elementary students, uh, from fifties and fifth, fifth and fourth grade, they're doing writer's workshops, where instead of the having one teacher, um, doing all the writing workshops and classes, they spread them out between each and everyone so they have different views of how they should write and just not focus on just one teacher's.
Um, in the middle of high school, there are quite a bit of highlights, um, one being the community youth forum that happened. Uh, the three topics were white supremacy, Islamophobia, proficiency-based grading, and the learning with it. I think, I saw you there, I saw Mr. McMahon in there. Um, I think that was very, very interesting. There was, it was a very diverse group of people, people, um, parents and then just members of the community. Fortunately, didn't see many middle schoolers, but there were lots of, um, high schoolers there, some high school translators, as a matter of fact, so that was very interesting. There was the potluck that drew people in. Um, I think it was just a good time to, um, let things out, I guess, and just talk to people about, um, something that is very sensitive, but in a very respectful way. Um, another interesting that happened is a group of high schoolers met with Bernie Sanders at Castleton, um, for a college fair and workshop. He gave a speech about, um, doing the FAFSA and since that time of year, I don't, were you there?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At the Bernie Sanders thing, yeah? You have anything to say?
Um, they had, yeah, they ha- also had workshops for, um, help prepare you to go to college. So, having your schedules done and teaching you about how classes work, and just like college prep thing for every, any student who wants to sign up.
Yeah, and at the same time, there's a Champlain College visit, so there's just a lot of things going on with college and career readiness, and I believe that's one of the reasons why our October eighteenth half-day, um, we brought in, um, Jeff Yalden, the motivational speaker, to talk about, um, relieving that stress, um, why, um, it's important to look ahead, and, um, I think he came to just speak to both middle school and high school for that half-day, and after that, we got, hopped, hopped right on the bus and groups were divided, students were divided, um, and got the opportunity to choose to go to C C V, St. Mike's, and U V M to tour around and speak to the professors there, speak to students, there were student panels, um, just based on your interest and based on, uh, your grade. Yeah, um, just a lot going on with college and career readiness going on right now, um. Do you wanna talk about the V S A C thing too, what happened there?
The V S A C?
Yeah.
Um, oh, so like there's, wait, that's the right one.
Hmm, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, V S A C is having these FAFSA Fridays where they're helping seniors, like, do, complete the FAFSA, and as a reward for completing your FAFSA, like, before, uh, Thanksgiving break, they can get a fifty-dollar gift card. Also, there, you can be entered into a raffle where you can get, I think, five hundred dollars for, um, one student who actually completes it. Um, also, there's a couple of seniors who are, um, submitted their applications for colleges, and the early action was, went through either Heidi, where, uh, she would send out all their applications. Um, and lastly, uh, V S A C is also sponsoring the senior class to help either, like, like, help pick the end-of-the-year event for graduation for seniors so we can have a little get-together or something fun to do.
Um, progress reports were released, uh, with yet another new format where there's, um, can't remember the, uh, four terms that were used, um, but it was kind of like, uh, there were four, I ca- I don't know how to explain it, it's kind of like the one, two, three, four system, but instead of the numbers, there were words to describe that level of proficiency, and in each class, students were given, um, I guess, um, a grade or like an, a title for that specific class. I'm not, I don't know why I'm blanking on this specific.
Proficient, nearly proficient?
Not like that, it was not like that, um, it was.
Yeah, usually.
That's the behavioral piece of it.
Yeah. I think it was something like that, yeah, I think it was a more behavioral and, um, behavioral-focused progress report for this time, um, not much on grades, um, which, uh, yeah. One of the feedback is like, what's my grade in the class? And it's still, um, since Web to School's not up and running for both middle school and high school, um, so obtaining, um, knowledge on your current grade for both middle and high school is very hard right now, um, which is. I'm not sure, because the Web to School, I believe, runs off GPA and stuff like that, and they're trying to move away from that. So, Web to School is not running, and, um, most of it.
Well, Web to School is running.
Running, but like, um, yeah.
That's our student management system.
The grades aren't put into there, yeah, yeah.
They're, they're figuring out how to make Web to School sh- display proficiency-based, um, ratings, so to speak, on that progress report, and it's proving difficult.
So, students don't really know how they're doing in school?
Well, like, through Canvas is the only.
Well, through Canvas is the way, but, um, for parents to see, there's not really a, a way with the progress report. Um, maybe with, I think with the report card, there will be, um, grades, but with progress reports, there isn't really an update for parents to know about, yeah.
This is a progress report and the report card comes in January, mid?
Yeah, I believe so.
The progress report's just on your habits, or is it just on behavior?
Not, not just.
Not just, like, completing work.
Right.
I mean, I received one, and I honestly, I'm just leaving it up to Rebecca to let me know how she's doing, because it is not clear, so.
So, I think we've had this discussion as we've tran- as we've worked through this transition for the last couple of years, and that is the over-communicating piece, to make sure that if there's questions, there's a place to give answers. And I think, I've seen them in the, in the newsletter, I'm just not sure what kind of communication you're seeing from parents, if any, or, when were the progress reports, uh, week two?
Week or two ago, yes.
Are you hearing much from the staff from, that are hearing from parents?
No, I've not heard that.
Okay.
That wouldn't mean that it's not happening, but I.
I think, I think, being the parent that received one, that it's new, so I think we're just gonna wait, I'm just gonna wait and see how it all, I'm not gonna like.
And there are conferences coming up.
Parent-teacher conferences on the twentieth, so.
Right before Thanksgiving, so that will be a good opportunity for parents to hear directly from teachers about pro- student progress. We, we talked about this in our pre-meeting, and I encouraged Destiny and Alex to, to talk about that. You know, because it is, it is messy, and it is hard, and there are a lot of school districts that are really struggling with it right now. And the technology side of it of how do you, how do you take everything that's happening and then get it into a system and, and get something out that expresses it properly is, is really hard. You know, so at the same time, we're starting to look at, um, our systems and do we need a, do we need a new system that's gonna work better with some of these so that it really sets us up for a, uh, good articulation of proficiencies in the future? Because Web to School, we're trying to kind of, you know, it's the fitting the, the circle into the square, so to speak.
This is sad, but I was thinking, since it's parent conference. It's coming up, is there a way that you can randomly sample a few faculty to just say like, you know, in your class, can you just track how many parents are s- you know, bring up this new, um, pro- as a question that they ask, and then just keep a, a tally for that as a kind of a data point for y'all?
Is it a majority, or is it a?
Right, or is it a few, maybe they're a trend, I mean, and that, we don't need it from all the faculty, you can just randomly sample, like, one from the lower grades, one from the middle, a few from the middle school, a few from the high school, and, um.
I think I was looking at it a little bit differently as well, and that is ensuring that the staff is ready to answer the multitude of questions that are coming in to, from. To from potentially coming from parents to, to make sure they're, they're both understanding clearly what it is and able to articulate it, right? Cause I think the hardest part about any change is not necessarily the change itself. The staff has a lot of work to do. But it's getting everybody to understand what it is and how to, how to work with something new.
And also what it's communicating.
Chi- exactly, and it, right.
Yeah.
So.
What does it mean?
I, I think the, we gotta just make sure that the staff is ready to answer clearly in our very, in a very articulate manner what those are, so I don't know how.
Well, I'm hoping that they're articulating to the students exactly what it is also, like as they're going through the work. So that they don't fall behind or that they're getting their work done. That they're staying on task to get where they're supposed to be.
I think that's been my biggest concern through this whole transition. I don't think the transition itself is the wrong thing. I think we're heading in the right direction. I think it's that, is that communication and making sure everybody understands that there is a place to go to get further information, right?
Have students been asked for their feedback? Around what's working in terms of this shift, you know, this big shift, especially in terms of reporting out your grades, um. Have you been polled or asked?
A- about grading, not really.
Okay.
Um, more about like, um, student environment. That's the focus, like, um, what's going on, how you're how you're feeling with like the hall system and all that kind of stuff.
Just sort of your, your safety within the school or your, your place within the school, but you haven't really been polled on, um, how's this new grading, uh, like the proficiency based system, is it making sense to you around your learning and what it's communicating to you?
Do you understand where you are?
Do you understand it?
Yeah, not much feedback from students. I haven't heard like, um, teachers, uh, or, uh, people asking for opinions and trying to, um, do like, I, I'm not, not saying there's nothing being done about it, but I'm saying like, um.
Understand, yeah.
Uh, a lot, taking that and then having someone else listen to that, I guess.
Right, just to kind of know where, just to get the pulse of where you guys are with your own grades.
Have you had any discussions with your teachers or with your advisor about the actual progress report?
An advisory, yes, but I'm not sure what the advisors are doing with that information, cause I know my advisor is writing that down. But I'm not sure if, um, he's giving it to someone else to look to or if our advisory rep, since we do have one, takes it to the advisory representative meeting that they have during advisory time, but I'm not sure what that information is being, uh, done, what was being done with it. Yeah, yeah, where it's going to, yeah.
My assumption would be it'd be going to the middle high school leadership team who's really kind of overseeing that work, but.
Might be a good question to see what the feedback loop is and how we know what, what's going on with our, you know.
And I think one of the key questions is, uh, Destiny for me, uh, cause I think Alex, you're still on the grade system, right? So you're, you're not necessarily in the
I mean.
Proficiency reporting.
They're like mixing the two, so it's kinda hard.
But Destiny, if you had to explain the progress report to your parents, could you, would you feel comfortable that you could clearly tell them what it refers, what it's referring to?
W- well, I have a brother who's gonna, he's gonna be graduating with, full on with proficiency and he's a freshman. So with him, I feel like it's hard to explain it with, but with me, I, I have to be honest, I just say this doesn't matter to me. I'm gonna be grading, graduating credits, so.
Oh, okay, I thought you were in the prof- in the proficiency.
So I'm a ju- I'll be the last year with credits. So I tell my parents, this doesn't mean anything to me, but when I explain it to my parents about my brother, it's kind of hard to explain, so he doesn't have As or Bs, don't worry about that. It's hard to explain that and say, well, what usually means is he's doing it. But what does exceeding mean? How I don't, I, it's hard to explain that, yeah.
And you have experience with proficiencies at the class level, at the course level, right? So your teachers are talking proficiencies and they're talking to you about your progress using that language. Is that true?
Yes.
Yeah. But then in the end, your transcript is still gonna represent a grade, a grade and a credit. Yeah, so that's the difference. The discussion, student and teacher across the board about progress for the most part, I think is couched in the proficiency conversation. Is that pretty accurate?
Would it be good information for us all to know, since it's supposed to be student, student centered based of where students are with understanding their own? Being able, like, I, I like the lens of being, could you explain this to somebody? Could you show them your progress report and your learning and explain it to somebody else so they understood it?
It sounds like it might be a great focus on learning for probably February or March, after they've gone through the progress report and the semester report. And, uh, to include students in that.
That'd be, that'd be real cool.
Teacher and Leon and some students to come and talk about how that has worked.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, that would be good.
And just grounded in the, the mission of our, you know, Winuski.
Yeah.
I would try to see if they can explain it and how their levels are to their college readiness or work preparedness. Because no one ever really goes around, you know, I don't go around everywhere and I'm like, I'm proficient. I, I talk about my skills in terms of job and or, you know, what I can do. No one really's to tell you the truth about like, you know, grades, no one cares what you graduate in college two years after you get a job, like there's not my, you know, it's not stapled on my head that it's three point seven four and it's gonna be there forever, right? And and I think if we can get in that habit of also talking the proficiency in the scope of our mission, it'd be interesting to hear if they can talk about it from that perspective.
Feel ready.
I like that you keep grounding us back to the center of what's holding us all together. You know, what we're saying, you know, I mean, it's important, I mean, that's why that statement's there, but it's nice to keep, you keep reorienting us back to that, which is great.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Good. Oh, so I did, can I ask questions about the college rep? This is just more of a curiosity question, this is. Where are Winuski students in terms of like nervousness about like college applications? You know, are they like, you know, I'm ready for this, I can do this, like there's no fear or is it, I am scared, shh, beep. About the whole process, like, you know, at the level of colleges that people are preparing for. And that's just more of a curiosity question because I work at a university.
Um, I think as a junior, I'm still undecided on what I wanna do. This is just speaking from my perspective, um. I think we have a lot of, um, opportunities for me to discover what I wanna do. There's a personal finance class, um, especially with everything that's going on with the, um, college tours, even though I don't plan to see myself maybe going to St. Mike's or CCV or UVM. It's just good to actually, um, be on campus, hearing what like financial aid packages are about, um. Think this year especially, um, there's a lot more opportunities given to us to like see, especially for students who didn't plan on going to college. I've heard students who say, yeah, I'm just gonna go out and be an author or be a rapper or something like that. And they're now actually considering and seeing that's actually a possibility, especially with ELL students too who, um, didn't see themselves, um, actually stepping on campus because their parents can't drive or something like that. So I think, um, this year is taking a big turn, I guess. What do you think as a senior?
Um, seniors have like a lot of help, like Destiny said, lots of opportunities that are helping students. Lots of students around me are saying like, they won't go here and there, just because they went on this college tour. And I guess people feel more ready. So as a like senior myself, like I don't feel scared to submit my application somewhere or like I already submitted four of them to, uh, four colleges.
Good for you.
I, like, I have more on the way that I can choose. And like all that work with these workshops and help from the Winuski school district, though, giving us these opportunities. I feel good about.
Thank you.
Seems like there was an awful lot of help. Last year, I know Rainbow made a specific comment about the VSAC guy who spent a lot of time up here helping that. Was, really did a lot of work to help, so.
Liam's still here, so he's doing really good. He's there on Wednesdays and Fridays, so I see him sometimes.
Nice, oh, good.
Well, it was one of the qualities in, um, Heidi McLaughlin that we hired, you know, she spent seventeen years at VSAC doing that work. She was the leader for years. And one of the big reasons we hired her is cause we wanted to start shifting the focus of the guidance program at the high school to college and career readiness and away from the work that we kinda had been doing in the past, which was probably more socially, emotionally crisis type of, uh, uh, approach.
Have we highlighted this person in our newsletter at all? It sounds like something that we should be highlighting, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure whether they put the, they may have, I think she wrote an article about the Peter Welch, uh, VSAC. Um, piece about adopting the senior class with the FAFSA Fridays and all of that. Um, she probably didn't highlight herself, but she, yeah.
Highlight her and then, um, if you quote from a student perspective, after maybe in March, when you get your applications, talking about this process. Um, to get the juniors ready again, at the, you know, a strategic article at that point, not that I'm trying to the, you know, it might be me who writes it when I get there.
You'll be, you'll be up again in March or so.
I'll be up in March again, I, you know, maybe that's the, the topic that I talk about in the letter.
But it would be good to have that coming from a student perspective as well.
It's not, she's not just helping the juniors and seniors, um.
Right.
I think like freshmen, sophomores during advisory, she brings people from like, um, Linden and them to come and be in the library and have their little booth set up and you can come in and talk to them. So that's something that I don't think other guidance counselors have been able to do because she has connections and she's been able to. I think that's one of the reasons why we've, we got to meet Bernie Sanders, we got to meet Peter Welch is because of her connections, so.
Something about strategic hiring. All right, anything else on your list?
I, I just wanna say, like, that conversation, that is exactly what we've been talking about and I think the board has been wanting to hear from student reps.
Yeah.
And it's been in the past, it's been kind of, you know, the report and, and there's a lot of great information in there, but the the level of engagement and discussion about real issues that are impacting you guys. That's, that's what everybody at the table wants to hear about, so, right, that was.
And, and what I really wanna make sure as well is that, you know, the, the questions about the proficiency piece and can you, uh, can you explain it, um, do you understand it? A, a no isn't a reflection on you or a no is a reflection of more work to do. And, and so we gotta look at it as an opportunity, not, not only to higher, highlight only the good things because those are the things that are, make us feel good. But, you know, highlighting things like that, that are, I mean, we knew it was gonna be messy, moving from proficiency to, to, or to the proficiency uh, model, we knew it was gonna be messy. We just need to be able to, to stay out in front of it from the communication standpoint and the education. Not the education in the math and the, and the science, but the education in what is it that we're changing? How do you read it? How do you know? So, I, I, I agree Sean, wholeheartedly, that that is exactly the discussion with, we wanna make sure you guys are open to have.
And open to having it with your peers, you know, so that you're bringing to us, so that we can hear what is going on. How, how are students, you know, are they in the center of their own learning or are, how are they understanding it? Because that helps us inform us of you know, some things that we can do too in terms of communication, cause that's our role around communication.
We're gonna get into budget season here shortly. Is there some other staff member that we need? Is there other staff position that? You know, they, the, the leadership team needs to think about and those, that's, little things end up showing up and so.
And just to bring it back to y'all, because it seems like you're giving a lot to us by giving these conversations. But these are the skill sets that are highly important when you go into the workforce, when you get to college, of learning how to be a leader and so if you need help on how to like write that as a bullet point on the resume, you know, we'll be more than happy to help you at that level, but um, know that, um, I know it's hard sometimes to go get that information because it feels like it's extra work. But it's invaluable to us, but it's also invaluable as a skill set for yourself as you become, uh, an engaged leader within the community. So I just wanna make sure y'all know that and we really appreciate it, love that.
Yeah. Great, all right. Thank you very much. Um, so next item here is just a readout on the VSBA annual meeting. First one I've missed in five or six years. Katie was in town. She's way more important than, than that, so, nothing, obviously. She's definitely more important. But, um, just thoughts and?
I guess I was the only one there. I didn't even, Sean and I didn't even cross paths. Um, it was, it was great. It was really focused on community and community engagement, um, and really sort of highlighting, you know, reinforcing some of the work that we've done around using neighborhood learning conversations to gather information around the graduation expectations and the, um, end statement. Um, and helping educate around like PLPs. We've done some, you know, big community things around that, but also just more inspiring too, to know that we're about to go out for our next group of neighborhood learning conversations, um, to start writing our own story and really checking in, um, with our community around that. So that was the main focus. Mm-hmm.
All right. Good. Yeah, I had some people from other, um, boards come up to me and say that they, it was really helpful, your session.
Great, yeah, I got invited to a board to go and talk to them, um, more about the community, our neighborhood learning conversations. But also I think what was super helpful too for them, because I think what, what really came out of that workshop was how, um, anxiety provoking it is to ask community what matters to them, um, because it's, it's clear like, so what, one, what are you gonna do with it? Uh, what are you gonna do when the, the not so positive experiences of education from past generations comes out and then how are we gonna use it in decision making and then how are you gonna report back out? You know, so that there's just this clear loop around that. So I think it was helpful to see that it's not as scary as it can seem.
Yeah.
Thank you for the feedback.
Otherwise, any, anything else that came to the surface? All right. Good, I, uh, we'll be back next year, see what happens. Um, next item here, B, uh, under eight is the, um, Board Monitoring Report Report four dot two. I believe after this one, we have two left.
Were we gonna add a third dot under A?
Community in, uh, under A? Nope, we're gonna add a C for the community engagement discussion, yeah. Um, so the Board Monitoring Report four dot two, um, uh, I will open up for comments.
This one new?
This was one we haven't done yet. No, we, so after this one, we have, uh, two left. And one of them is a relatively short one and the other one is.
Four point three, uh, operational complaints and four point eight governance investment.
Okay.
And so four point eight is just about done. We'll probably bring that one back in December and four, four dot three, hopefully in January, cause that one's pretty close to done as well. Um, so I'll open up for comments. I did try to scan through it for, uh, data not being, uh, a neg- a not, because we didn't see it. Um, I did, as a, at a base level. So take all the feedback here.
I think it's fine. You did a good job, yeah. You're getting really good at it.
So.
I say you should do the rest.
My, my, well, I, I, so, so the other two are done, essentially done.
Right.
Um, and, and, but I think what's, my vision of what's gonna happen with these is the first one, and Sean, you can help me on the executive limitation. The first one is always hard to just get on paper. There's not a lot out there for, um, places to go, you know, steal unmercifully, for, for a structure to get started with, so I think the second time around is the one we're really gonna focus on. Did we really mean this? Not, did we put it, right now is did we put it down on paper and does it make a first order of sense? The second one is gonna be, did we really mean this? So. Any other?
The, the only thing that, um, in four point two five, the interpretation, appoint the external auditor on a periodic basis, whether or not you wanna interpret that more specifically. Maybe not, if you wanna, you know, keep it kind of broad like that. But, you know, I mean, I, another way would be to put, you know, no less than every three years or, you know.
Uh, put a timeframe on it.
If you wanted to.
Right. Well, yeah.
Periodic is a, is a, is a pretty broad term.
Once every ten years.
Okay, cause we actually have it where we're looking at that, what, we've done the contracts for two years at a time?
I think it's three.
Three.
Yeah.
And this is our second three-year iteration, so we'll be six with the same auditor by the time we get done. We will probably wanna look for another one or, or look, put it out to, potentially out to bids rather than keeping some of the same ones true.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it always goes out to bid, but whether or not you, as a board, you decide like this is kind of the maximum term for an auditor and then we go to someone else.
Okay. So you can put a time, we can put a, uh, a timeframe on there. Yep, that, that's actually a good point, so. And I think a three-year piece right now has, seems to have, eh, the first year they're figuring it out. The second year they're reaffirming, the third year they come in with certain biases already. And then after that, it's a rubber stamp and you get, you know, a second term, a three, probably not too bad. But after seven years, there, you're getting just a rubber stamp rather than a deep dive.
Right. Right.
So that's, that's one of the conversations we have to go through, obviously, if the bid is two X and, you know, you gotta weigh that too, so, okay.
I'm not quite sure I understand the interpretation of four point two three. We interpret this to mean we understand current organizational performance with respect to ends and executive limitations. So gain assurance of successful organizational performance on ends. Wouldn't that be, would that more be about that we would have information to base, that we would interpret this to mean we understand current organizational performance with respect to ends? I'm not understanding that.
Well, the, the ends are defined as, um, you know, the, the college and career-ready, healthy, that whole thing, but.
Right, isn't it, no, I get what the ends, but, but the org, so if we're, if we are assuring that we are making gains on our end statement, we interpret that to mean that we're showing, um, we interpret this to mean that we understand current organizational performance.
I think one of the things to think about with that is, can, can you actually determine current organizational performance on ends at this point?
I think separating ends and execu, executive limitations, I think, yes, we, we definitely have a feel.
We're still in the metric development, right?
On the ends, we're still in the metrics development, right.
So whether or not, you know, that becomes part of the interpretation and/or impacts the conclusion, I, I don't know, but.
Will we see this again? Or is this, if we approve this, it's?
We can, we can certainly bring it back. Normally, we would, we would review and accept, but at this point, I, you know, just to get them, uh, moving, we can certainly bring it back or make adjustments.
Cause I feel like the data too, I mean, I feel like the data based on policy interpretations, that doesn't seem like.
I think, to me, maybe, looking back on this one now, splitting up the ends versus the executive limitations would make.
Yeah, cause one's more, I mean, the ends is still in work in progress, like, we still don't have the metrics for that.
So is that then a revision in policy or a revision in?
Right, because this is.
Interpretation in data.
So specific.
And possibly a conclusion.
I think we need both.
How did it go from board job description?
Our, our.
I need more time with this, I'm sorry, I didn't really put a lot of time into it.
Yeah, no, so from a board job description though, it's, it's our, we have to ensure that we understand whether we're moving forward with regards to the ends.
Right.
So let's leave it at that, let's drop the executive limitations for a second. Um, and from an end standpoint, we're still collecting data, we're still outlining, trying to understand where those are at. I think if you break it up and deal with the executive limitations, I think we're very well organized on the executive limitations, the, the interpretations, the data, um, the compliance, I think we're, we're reading into them, we've seen them before. So I think those are pretty well closed, the ends are the one piece that's still open. So I think part of the question is, would we break this down from a policy standpoint and, and insert, not a four, three, A and B, but, you know, just insert a new one that separates the ends and the executive limitations? It may be too broad just to put them together because you can't answer them both, I don't think, at this point, with a positive statement.
Yeah, policy change.
Add, add another line.
Well, it does separate them under, uh, like number two, create, maintain written pol, uh, governing policies that really address the broadest level. Oh, I guess that's really just about our.
Yeah, that's just putting them down on paper.
But it seems like the gain assurance of successful organizational performance on ends and executive limitations is asking for measurement?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, so.
Although the other one that we did last time, which we were talking about, oh, I guess that was the ends when we were doing the ends itself.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, so I think for four point two three though, if we, I, I think, tell me if you agree, that from an executive limitation standpoint, we, we can, we do have assurance of successful organizational performance.
Right.
Right? We are comfortable with that piece of it.
And we're also comfortable, I think, where we are in our process of getting to the end statement metro, like we, it's a process of getting there and I feel like the successful, um.
We're doing our job.
Yeah, the, the, the successful assurance, like we are gaining, you know, we are getting to the performance of, we're now building towards understanding what metrics we're gonna be using to measure those ends. So there's that too.
And that would be successful performance at this point.
At this point, so meaning that we're going back to the word at the current, how are we gonna get on, find that, I don't think, like, current?
So do we break it up into two separate lines?
We interpret this to mean that we understand current organizational, no, I know, now that makes sense to me. We, cause, cause now we understand current organizational performance with respect to ends, which is one current performance, and executive limitations is another.
Maybe it's elaborating on that performance, cause I think you can articulate pretty clearly the executive limitations piece.
But my other question is the data, I don't think it's based on policy interpretations of them.
For the executive limitation piece, I think it is, because that, that is our assurance that the organizational performance is meeting what we expect, is our approval of each of the executive limitations. So that piece would be okay. I don't think the ends now looking at this, that the ends piece fits in with that statement.
Okay.
Because it's not a policy interpretation that's doing the ends. It is, that one ends up being the data.
Right, right.
That is getting the data down and knowing that we're heading in the right direction. So, it, does it, back to the original comment, does it make sense to break them down into two line items? One is assurance of successful organizational performance on ends, and a second would be a, uh, organizational performance on executive limitations. Gets to the same thing, but it forces a different interpretation.
What do you think?
And after going through the training today.
You're allowed to talk and tell us.
I was gonna save it for the community. I think we can keep it here, but you can add different bullet points on their interpretation. One's just about the executive limitations and the other one is on ends. And for me, there's like a little baby step before that, it's just like, you know, make sure board members actually understands what ends and executive limita, so even though I was thrown into the fire, said you did a great job, you know, giving me a hash, it really made so much more sense after today.
After hearing Miriam talk about it?
I did a policy, Marbury Carver's training today, and I got, for your sake, I did get their published materials as a guide, so for any new, uh, board materials, for any new members, we can give them this. It's not gonna solve everything, but it would have been.
Perspective.
A little bit more perspective, like, cause ends is a different terminology than what I would ever call it. I would've called it outcomes, you know, like, what are we ending about? Like, you know? So, you know, one of my, now that I've gone through the training, I'd say one of the interpretations is, is gain assurance is like successful training of board members or what it mean, defining.
Hmm.
Um, and, and that's either some type of training that they got, or, you know, went to, or, you know, or all.
Ah.
Um, and then you go into the data on the ends.
I would've never read it that way. What you're saying, like, so what you're saying is that gain assurance of successful organizational performance is really on us to, to make sure that we've gone to trainings to understand this?
Yeah, because this governance policy is not something that's common for most of us, right?
No.
Um, and once again, I'm not saying anything, I mean, you did a good job of kinda like shifting me through.
Thirty percent of what you needed.
And, and it's hard, because, I mean, these people first made up this whole thing, you know, they, they came up and there's books about it. Um, but yeah, that seven out, even though I wish they gave us a break between, it was really good. And, and I think for me, on one point, as a new board member, it'd just be, one step one, know what this means.
So what I hear you saying is inclusion somewhere in this policy to, to really, um, articulate that board members need to be trained and educated in the pro, policy governance process.
We have a policy that touches that. So, yeah, they're, they're, one of the, one of the items in here is, is exactly that. So, you know, we can bring that back early and take a deeper look at it, so, cause we can.
And you can circle back around on this one too, if this, if that gaining assurance of the successful organizational performance has a component to that.
Let me, let me take a shot at the interpretation and just break those two pieces out. Um, I think I took the easy way out and, um, let, let me break it out in the interpretation. Um, I think the conclusion is gonna be the tough piece, compliance or not, cause compliance to the executive limitations, I would say yes, to the ends, I would say not yet.
Still in progress, right.
Right, so, I'm almost thinking that it might be easier just to break those out into two line items, one on ends and one on the.
Not to complicate it further, but I'm gonna do that anyway probably, but could you split them out in the data area? To make clear in the data area that you're further along in terms of the organizational performance relative to executive limitations versus ends.
Yeah, I, I think they, both in interpretation and in data, and I think, I think breaking them out into separate lines keeps them both in focus, but, but forces a different view on, on how to look at both of them. Cause you, I think you gotta look at ends very differently than you do executive limitations, especially where we are right now. Maybe in, in five years, we may be at a point we could put them together and do them together, but I think that's too broad a, an interpretation to get with a short, unless you break it up. So let me, let me take a shot at it, I'll, I'll, I'll break it up. It won't be adding or changing anything in a policy, it'll just be, it'll just be keeping the same words we have, but putting it into two different sections. So it's not really a policy change that we're looking at, it's just a, the way it's laid out differently. So I'll, I'll take a shot at it. What we'll do is we'll bring it back in the regular for discussion in a regular meeting, not through consent, so we can have this conversation. I think the conversation is more important to have, just to get ourselves talking about it and making sure we're.
Talking out loud.
It's easy to critique his.
Oh, yeah.
Critique his writings, right? It's always easier to critique somebody else's. Critiquing your own, you know, staring at your own navel for a while is tough. So, I'll, I'll break it down into two pieces and try to bring it back in here, so. Harder for some than others, never mind.
Thank you for that.
So what I'll do is I'll just, I'll make four, two, three, four, two, four, and just slide the others all down by one and, uh, make the change. I think that's a good point on the four, two, five from a timing, put a timing piece in there.
Yeah.
And then we'll, uh, we'll see where that goes.
Yeah, thanks for the conversation on this. It, it helps to get a little more, uh, hands on, talky on in the policy of breaking it apart and seeing it.
All right, so we will bring that one back, we'll leave it at that for right now, and then, uh, take on the added item C for the community engagement discussion. Um, so I wanted to put this one on here, uh, last month and, and didn't quite get to that point, but, um, what I wanted to do is have a discussion about how do we move this thing forward? Um, and, and basically, I think I wanted to start with a discussion of what is it that we want to get out of this, um, before we talk about how we format it. Um, and I think my, my, um, view on what we're trying to do from an overall process is get a, a relatively small but active group of folks together in a board meeting, have a discussion about where we're going, what we're doing, what they would like to see, how they would like to see it different. Just drill down into that discussion.
So this would be somewhat of a launch into the plan for launching off to more neighborhood learning conversations?
Well, yeah, let me, let me keep going with that same discussion. And then, and then, so, so go through that discussion, then with the phone, and I, and I.
And there was this sense of, you know, of trying to mine about pride and, um, sort of that, the relationship with the school, therefore our relationship with ourselves, you know, how, how's that whole thing playing out? Is that what we were looking for?
I'm, I'm completely open here on where we're gonna get to.
It's pretty broad, but it was, but, but the, the push was, how do we get in front of our own story as Winuski's? Like really creating our own narrative versus being, um, sort of subjective, it's not quite the word, but to this sort of old school narrative of who Winuski is. This kinda came out of our, uh, board meeting with Colchester, when they couldn't even agree to do a study with us, cause they thought we would ruin their sense of pride in themselves, um, as a community. So we, so this helped us to recognize that we've got a lot of great things going on. And do we, do our community members know what's going on in the school building? Do the students know about student-centered learning? Do new families coming in know, know about the, you know, the transformation and the redesign that's happening in here? Um, that's where some of these conversations, you know, were getting started, was kinda building towards this, right?
Okay, so you're.
Was that, are we, am I on the?
Yep.
Okay, so you're more of a push information through these forums rather than a gather to bring in?
No, 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 no. I think it's a gathering of information, but I think there's also the setup of what is, um, one motivating, I mean, there was a motivation about going out and there was a motivation of, um, highlighting the positive things that are happening in the school in relationship with what, um, folks and families and even community are experiencing from the school in their different lenses.
You find out both.
Right, it's, it's a two-way, like a two-way conversation. Here's information, do we know this information about the schools? Has it made a difference in your perception of the school system, therefore your perception of your sense of community in Winuski, your pride in, in the community?
Yeah, I think, you know, when you, when you get people together, it's kind of, um, it's a mix of the macro and the micro, you know, otherwise, you know, people, I don't think people feel really engaged in this, they just love to like vision or they love to be in the weeds. So how, one of, I was thinking about, you know, like, how do you, how do you ask community members, parents, you know, how would we know that our, that our schools, um, uh, are, are supporting students to be successful? You know, and then maybe getting into a little more micro, what do you think the school does really well? And what are the things that you think the school could do better?
Right, right.
So then they can get into the specifics of, well, I wish, you know, they changed the darn math program, or, you know, I wish they had more sports available or AP courses or whatever. Um, but also having them at that high level where they can kind of say, well, here's how I would measure that, uh, the school did a good job for my family.
And I don't think it needs to be, it can't be big groups, it's gonna have to be small.
Six, I'm thinking five, five, six or seven people.
That might be too many for some groups.
Mm-hmm.
You might just need like a couple friends over for coffee.
Yeah, it's kinda like how we started with those other neighborhood learning conversations and making sure, and making sure too, that we are, uh, reaching out to those that might not have been involved in the original cast of conversations.
Right, that's why I think the first group is a critical group, just to get a broader focus.
I, I wonder too about vetting the questions, like that string of questions that you just, um, asked Sean, is, uh, you know, almost poly them with that group too, to make sure, are these the questions, do these questions make, they might make sense to us, but do they make sense to the people that we're inviting? Is it giving you information? And do you feel like you're rece, you know?
Yeah.
You're being received for the information that you had? Cause I think there needs to be a vetting process before we, we help shape the facilitation that's gonna happen in neighborhood learning conversations. We need to be super clear that what we're asking and where our heads are now makes sense to the folks sitting around the table too, and they can help us craft.
Right, just to, to give a place to start.
Yes, yeah.
Level set.
Cause there is a timeline, you know, sort of the origin of the idea, the vetting of the possible conversations, and then the setting up for, you know, like, we're set like March, April, for actually having the neighborhood learning conversations, we can set up facilitators, help people, have facilitation, help them set up each one, that they have everything we need and that we're capturing the information, cause we're gonna go back out and do something with it and report back out. So we do need to have sort of a timeframe.
The questions that you just asked were almost exactly the same questions. And, and if we can kind of align both, it actually might, you know, from an efficiency standpoint.
I, I think that has to be part of the discussion.
What capital, that?
Got a group going of, we, we got a bond running out, so we've got a group looking at what would we do different if we had the ability to do something different?
Right.
Physically. Physically, uh, spatially, as well as, you know, do we add on to the building, do we change it the way it is now?
And you'll be gathering information about the academics, that whole thing.
Capital community project, yep, okay, got it here.
Yeah. Um, alright, so, so giving information about what it is we're doing, accepting information on whether people recognize that, whether they've heard it, where they've heard it from, so we can gather some input on what works from a communication out standpoint. Uh, what do we do well, what can we do better, kind of conversations and then tally all of that up? Is that kinda hitting to the piece that we were after?
There's a statement that was made at today's training that, you know, schools are not really the ends, it's really a vehicle. They're the means. And, and that hits me a lot when we're thinking about this question, because maybe we can add just for fun, you know, what do you envision school, like, what does school mean to you? Um, to a community? I think about this from a perspective, because during the capital planning meeting, we're talking about, do we renovate the art cent, um, the, the theater?
The PAC, yeah.
The PAC lab, because, you know, maybe it could be a central gathering, you know, the school, you know, a school could be a civic center, community, another form of community center that brings in the community as well as be a place of education, right? And, and I don't know if that would get that, you know, kinda get, you know, there are talks about, you know, safety reasons for cafeteria, having two cafeterias. Well, if I can hear another reason for why we would have a larger space for another cafeteria, it would justify, safety is always important, but, you know, to just build a bigger empty space that isn't gonna be utilized.
A lot of the time.
A lot of, how about we can find other ways that would be great for the community to use? Um, that would find, that would be, you know, part of that question. We won't need to lead them in, but it's just kinda hearing, what do you envision the school? What, what does school mean to you?
The institution as well as the building, as well as the school, the curriculum.
And I realize that is a very vague question, especially when I'm thinking about the new immigrants, the new people who really just see school as knowledge transfer and learning. And it may be harder for, and I'd love to hear your perspectives from a students, you know, as parents from, who are not coming, you know, coming to Vermont that's not white. What would they think about a question? Would they be able to answer a question like that? And would they actually, you know, what does that mean in terms of our communication with the non-white community? And then also other forms of diversity, I wanna make sure that we're considering like business owners. People who have been here for generations, diversity of socioeconomic status levels.
Cause we've talked to the business community once on a different, from a different angle, not necessarily utilizing or the, the use of, you know, the space.
And we have a large senior citizen population here, don't we?
Yeah, for sure.
We, we, I mean, is it something that we can tap into them for a concept of what school is? Because one of the things that like I think about a lot, um, and I think about this a lot when I think about proficiency learning, is that it's gearing us up to teach students how to be lifelong learners. Um, really, and that's the motivation of kind of proficiency, so how do we bring in all that perspective in to the notion of school? Because if we only just ask like, you know, just local parents and teaching, we narrow our focus of what school is. And we'll end up with another building that, you know, everybody has bricks and, you know, looks like it came from the 1950s and we'll know that it came from the 2018s. You know, so this, I've been thinking about that a lot and how we would narrow that as a conversation.
Okay. Um, but that's interesting, cause that's a little bit different path, but it makes a lot more sense to me than, than where I had originally been thinking, so.
And it is also a good way to kind of tee that whole idea up in the community.
Yes.
You had to say, you know, so once you talk about like school and learning and education, so what would you, uh, what do you like or what don't you like about our building right now and supporting what you're, you're talking about?
I also wonder, it, it, you know, in this connection to the capital project thing, but then also connecting it to, as a Winuski community member, what's your relation, how, how does your relationship with being a Winuski community, community member, how's it connected to what, what you think the school is doing or not doing? You know, because that gets back to the narrative about who Winuski is, because certainly the city, when they were sharing some of their information that, a lot of people, like the schools, sometimes the city are, are, you, it's hard to untangle them, right? In terms of your perception of this town and your perception of this school, they're generally pretty tied together. But I wonder, like with, starting with that big question, which I like, because it is sort of open-ended and visionary and, you know, and anyone can kinda add a piece to it, is then getting into the, the micro of it. But also digging into, so then what's our relationship with ourselves as community members and therefore the school? And how do those two tie in? Because if we are trying to recreate a narrative, I mean, that was one of the driving forces of this whole commu, next round of communication, is to tell our story.
Right.
What are we doing well, what are we not doing well? And I think starting really big with vision of what is education is a wonderful way to start. And if we can weave into some of the capital projects, that's awesome too, but it really is about getting our story.
Our story.
Yeah, you know? One, again, giving information about some of the new changes and receiving information, um, about people's perceptions and their relationship with the school, whether they have kids in here or have had kids in here or not, right?
And, and we can do that, I mean, Texas is a good example, they, they sell out all their high school football games, right? People still go, like, we could do, we should have something similar with our soccer team that, you know, went all the way to the semifinals. All the way, you know, I don't know how. It's hard, but like it was great, there was pride, right?
It was a lot of pride, yeah.
We should have pride, but we should also probably have pride in like the artistic nature of our students. All the things that you are all doing, how do we bring in the community, how do we also, like, it takes a village, right? But like you think, I, I always think about that community, there's a great senior community center. How do we better engage that? You've already started the engagement with Waterworks and businesses.
Yeah, and the International Potluck.
International Potluck, right? So.
So it's, it's moving for sure. It's not like it's stagnant.
No, it's just, go ahead.
Seems like it could be a little more thoughtful or planned.
It feels to me like it needs, it needs the capacity to bring it all together to, into the story.
Yes, I think that that's the sort of, back to the story.
Which I think about a lot, but don't feel like we have the capacity to do that.
That's why we're here. Tell a good story. You guys do the hard work, go tell the story.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, it's a deal. Alright.
So if we wanted to get more specific about timing, so when would we, cause it looks like there's a little bit more work to be done even in our own heads. Uh, maybe coalesce like we're watching our conversations so I can remember what we just said, but also.
I got a lot of thoughts written down here, so we can put them together. We can put ours together.
And didn't we make decisions on who's on this committee? I mean, just so that we have point people for, is me, is me and you, right?
Okay, I guess I'm talking to you.
Exactly, let's do this. So we could get together and maybe kinda come up with it, so that we maybe could bring that to the next board meeting before we start inviting people? Because I think we're gonna need a lot of relationships to say who's gonna be at that first round. Not only we're gonna need to know what we're gonna be talking about, but how can we make sure we have a broad range at that first conversation?
So let me, let me offer up then that, that no, uh, December probably not gonna be good timing with the education in the budget. But that doesn't preclude a discussion in that December meeting that could be, you know, 15 minutes. A first pass list of people that we might invite.
Or a first pass run of what we've sort of put together from this conversation.
I was putting that for January. I, I was thinking that would be in January, give you guys the time until January to get that formatted. I'm thinking, what, for this forum, I'm thinking, you, I think you mentioned March as the first one here.
Yeah, maybe the forum, uh, February, March, well, cause I feel like this would be a kickoff, meaning that we would have a lot of other things, we need to have a lot of other things in place too. If this, if this, this forum is gonna be the kickoff and then hopefully we have more information about breaking into the smaller groups and how we're gonna facilitate that whole thing.
Right, right, cause we gotta deal with facilitators.
Yeah.
But I think planning that first one is gonna be key to get it off the ground, get things moving. Um, so if we can, we can, we can set some time in, in December to maybe, to, to look for you guys to have at least a straw proposal of, you know, what, what that discussion might look like. And then we can talk about potentially some folks. I, I had put it in my last newsletter that we were gonna do it and I did get some feedback. I did get a couple of people that said they would be willing to, to join. We gotta be really thoughtful about how we do that invite.
Yes.
Both geographically within town as well as making sure that we have people that, that will take it back and, you know, bring more people in. So that'll be.
Alright, so a little straw, like a, it's a skeleton proposal for the discussion by December and possibly some names and such, but.
We'll solidify it and with another discussion in January that gets deeper about being ready or not. And have this thing set for February. Does that make sense? Then we can get out into the community in the April, May through, you know, late, late March, April, May timeframe, hopefully consolidate some of that feedback by, you know, over the summer and then maybe at our retreat in August or wherever we have that, we, that would, maybe that would be our time to coalesce the, the information next steps. Where do we go from here and set our community engagement activity for 2019 based on that? At the retreat?
Okay.
Does that kinda flow with the, the timing? The timing would make me feel better, because it sets something that we're actually going forward to move something to do.
Yes.
So that would be good. You guys are signing up for the hard work on this one. But, you know, it's, it's.
We got this.
Who can argue? Who can argue? Confidence, confidence is half the battle.
Right?
Tell people you got it covered and then go figure out how to get it done later.
It's good to have some deadlines on the table too, so to help us.
That is, that is a little bit key.
Alright.
Okay, so we, timing, December straw proposal, so we'll put some time in.
The big thing is we're trying to gear up for February community forum here at, at the table in February. And we'll let you know by January if it's actually.
January, fine tune, fine tune the discussion points and finalize the list. Hopefully the list is finalized by that point.
We need some help with that one. Some help with the list.
February forum, right?
Yeah.
And then, uh, March, April, May. Further community, and, and I think the big piece of that forum before we get done is an agreement, actually even before the folks come, is an agreement that they would be willing to take this forward. Alright, that'll be one of the pieces that, when they come, that'll be one of the knowledge points that they have when they leave, is that we're gonna be looking to invade their time and space and friends to get the input. So, okay. Consolidate information over the summer. And then at the retreat, get a readout on next steps and. And at that point, we've talked to hopefully, you know, 30 to 50 community members, got some information out about what's going on in the, in the school, what their thoughts are coming backwards and propagate some more of that knowledge. Alright. Alright, and I like the idea of incorporating the capital project communication as a piece of that discussion as well. What is the institution, what do the physical building mean as well as? Okay, good. Plan is formed. So I'll, I'll type this up, um, and try to get my thoughts, put it down, just send it off to you guys, so you can at least have a starting point for what we talked about. Alright, um, any recent community activities?
Soccer games.
Go.
They were fun until they weren't.
That's the way it is, it is good to have that excitement though.
It was a really great run, like super, super awesome.
It was just, the games, especially the playoff games, all the teachers were there, it was, it was really good.
It was definitely a big community event. People who don't even go to Winuski were there. Yeah, it was, yeah, good crowds.
I think the nice thing looking at is there were three seniors on the team. So it's not like, it's not like you had 12 seniors doing, you know, all the work and it'll be gone for the next five years, right? So continuity is a, is a big deal. That was pretty exciting. Um, I, should we recognize them at one of our board meetings? I think it might not be a bad thing if we can invite them in.
Amazing season.
Yeah, it is something worth recognizing.
Love it.
Yeah. So we get them in, uh.
Get them, get them ready for next year.
Ask them for more excitement next year?
Yeah.
Continue, continuing to. So would that be a, I mean, December seems like it'd be the right time first, right off at the start of the meeting, it's gonna be busy, but it's worth, uh, it's worth, worth putting that time in, that's something we can do, or at least ask for.
Yep.
Alright, that would be good. Alright, um, book discussion. Into definitions of community. Interesting when you stop and think.
Right.
Where you end up. It was, um, I, I guess I was surprised that when you stop and think about how many different communities, we use community loosely, but when you, when you think about how many different ways and how many different groups you really deal with and work with and live with and play with and everything else, it's, it pretty much broadens the dis, the definition in good shape. That's, I think, that the piece that I walked away with that is, it was, it makes you think about how broad that ends up being.
Yeah, I like, I like, uh, some of the descriptions of him talking about how community feels and how he could talk about what community felt like when he was growing up. And, uh, it kinda reminded me, like today I went down with high school students to Waterworks and we had about 20 students. And, you know, it was just fantastic, you know, and that was, that felt really community-based, cause here we have this business reaching out to us. And they, they were like, yeah, we wanna, we wanna help your kids understand about, you know, about jobs and careers and also we wanna, we wanna feed them and we want them to know that this is their place too. And, and then I was driving some of them home and I was like, I waved to like 15 people along the road. You know, there was staff out walking, there was parents with their kids coming home and, you know, and that's when I was like, yeah, that, that feels like community to me. You know, I felt like I know all these people, they know me, people are out doing healthy things and, and being together and.
I thought through, um, his, one of his, one of his initial definitions revolved around the, the trauma on some of the groups that are coming out of some of these countries and it was back, uh, group moving into Western Canada, there was apparently a bunch of them and, uh, you know, they're, they're rooted in, in some trauma in the background. It, it kinda forced them to either come together or blow apart. They came together.
The Mennonites.
The Mennonites, right? And, and so, you know, I, I look at the, I've been here all my life in Winuski and until 15 years ago, it was like, nothing changed. Families were the same, the, it, it got into a point where it was a really routine, um, existence. I mean, community was community, you knew everybody, but you didn't necessarily tend to need to get involved there. People were there, you knew them. Now that that changes it, we didn't have that trauma to bring something to coalesce around, to, to, to come together around. And I wondered now, you know, over the last 10 to 15 years, we've got a lot of new folks in. And I wonder now, you know, over the last ten to fifteen years, we've got a lot of new folks in the community and it's not necessarily easy for somebody that's been around a long time to to reach you. Never really had to do that. So, you know, is my community just my neighbor? Uh, we got a, we got a great neighborhood, dogs love our treats anyway, I don't know about the neighbors, but. But, you know, you reach out to the people right around you and I I keep pondering, how do you get? For me, I'm an introvert, how do I, how do you, how do I get to reach out further and deeper into the community? That, that, that to me is a hard thing. It's not a comfort zone for me, so something is gonna force me to do that. And that's hard, but.
I appreciate you saying that, it's, um, a couple of points. Like, so I went to the policy go, you know, in in, um, the governor, or sorry, Carver policy thing today, you know. And the one thing that I appreciate Winuski and the efforts that, um, in meeting you all and interviewing for the school board is that you made an effort to get to know me to kind of decide. I know eventually along the way, um, you know, you saw my background, knew that I was, knew that I had something to talk about and knew that I had. But in going to the policy, I noticed that like, um, people don't really talk to me there. You know, even with fellow school board members and partly is because I am distinctly different from everybody else there. Like, it is a complete, and and it felt even more when I was at lunch, when, you know, I first in line because I love going to the buffet line first because like, you gotta be a leader, you gotta be a leader, like otherwise no one else goes. So, but then I sit down at a table and I was there for my, by myself for a good until the last few people didn't have any other tables to go sit at. And then when I was having a, trying to have a conversation with my table mates, they, when I asked a question, they would look at, answer, look, talk to someone else as if they asked the question. And it was like, oh, so I guess I'm not really part of that community. But I've never really felt that here as much here. And and so I just wanna say thank you, um, for that because I think we really do try to live and I think there is a sense of pride when you're living in Winuski because people can feel it and they understand the acceptance. And and with that said, I think there's also kind of, I went to the Peace Jam with the students and I listened to them and and they talk about white supremacy. I I, I struggle sometimes when they go to the extreme as if all white people are evil in the white structure and it fills the fear. And when I was watching with the student group, I saw the facilitator and we were with a bunch of students of color and you could see morale going down, down and down because it just felt this impressive weight of a system that's only white people that can change it. And and I, and I think one of my roles, I really do, is to be a leader and be a role model for people who look like me to say, you know, but you can make change, this is why I did the school board. But I also tell them that a lot, and this was part of the story that I said, is that I never changed who I was. I never catered to being more white. A lot of the methods that I use to help change the system are taught through the, my cultural understanding, the works of Confucius, the works of Art of War, Sun Tzu, to, you know, where, not that I'm at war with you all, it's more on the levels of like, you know, know the, know the organization to figure out where the levers of change can be made. And then I know, I got good feedback from a few of the students who said they really appreciated that because they could see that they could be part of the community. And I think what, how that relates to the first book is that first chapter is about this community of fear. And and I think one of the things that we have a benefit, because we have lots of different people in this community is we can hopefully lessen some of the fear. There are still some people that are fear of this change. I heard about this Rite Aid lady, there's a part of me that wants to take her out to lunch to see why she's following students and making them feel uncomfortable at some point. To kind of, you all know what I'm talking about, right? And it's like, okay, like, how do we deal with that and not go from a, you know, complete shift? And I've noticed this actually at UVM where I'm like, you just wanna punish people right away, this instantaneous punishment and it's almost as if you're going, following for the fastest kind of government and that's not what you're trying to do and we have to be careful of that because we're in an environment where we're trying to make everything whites versus non-whites. And I think.
This time is the discussion, this time is the, any kind of progress or.
And I'm not saying that there are not white people that are like at this stream, but that's like five percent. When I work with you all, truly believe that you are my ally, like you are like my friend, you are my community member to make Winuski, and you believe in that, I'm gonna also contribute, you believe in the students here. And so like, I think we have to think about that when we're talking about community because I have felt being us, you know, outside, um, when I come to some of these school board events. Um, that, not here, but when we go to the broader, bigger picture. And I hope you don't mind me, and I don't, I feel actually comfortable sharing this with you all, which isn't always easy for a lot of people, right?
Well, on that note of sharing things that aren't easy for people, um, I was born and raised to be a racist and white supremacist. Not with the tiki torches and the sheets, um, but it's the stories we, that are told within the families, you know, in terms of, it is fear-based, obviously, right? Like a long heritage of hate, uh, for people who aren't like us. And what I find about that is that, um, especially since Charlottesville, um, there's been a reinforcement that, um, white supremacists look a certain way, that they are angry white men who carry tiki torches and sheets. And quite frankly, um, I think the majority are silent, kind people who carry these stories with us that are handed down to us, um, but, but through our silence perpetuate systems of oppression. And and so it's an interesting, um, coming from this place, you know, at least being able to untangle what it means to be, um, to have been given the story that your race is more, is more supreme than another race. And what that feels like inside bodies and how that, how that whole thing works. I think it can also be generalized to, some people were given that around religious groups. My religion is more supreme or superior to your religious group and, you know, certainly we could go gender, but I think, um, fear is, I mean, I I, it's awesome that he, I think it was so good at what he does is because he brings out what keeps us separate, you know? And it's important to talk about it from both of our perspectives, you know, of seeing that and hearing that because it's, um, to be able to say that, that I, I, I too was, I was born to be a racist and a white supremacist, you know, it's hard to say. I'm sure it's probably hard to hear, you know, because you can look at me and think like, oh, no, 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 you wouldn't be like, oh, oh, yes, it's in my cells, it's in my body, it's in my lineage, right? And I love that this, this book gives us this ability to, um, name fear-based community. I'm not one of them, like in this whole chart that he does, you know, join against others, we must stop them versus deepening community, which is sharing your story, which is what we were just talking about of being able, I think what Winuski is so beautiful about is that we are creating a new story together, not just for ourselves, but for a microcosm of the world of how do we do this thing, all this, all carrying the stories that our families and our systems have given us? We didn't choose some of these stories, we didn't choose the bodies that we were born into, but how do we do something with it that that deepens community, you know, to open doors between us and share stories that unite us, to share identities that draw us together to seeking deeper connection? And I think that's, if we can all be really honest about where we're kind of coming in from, from different places, it helps us to connect more, to see it from different lenses. A lot of, I think a lot of people, as we talk about white supremacy or racism, it seems like it's a bunch of mean people. And that's not necessarily, that's one, that might be one factor. But there's a whole nother, again, a lot of people who look and sound like me, um, who are kind, but were given stories that sometimes you don't know what to do with, right?
Taking it back to the community piece is it makes it more difficult, it it makes it a conscious effort and and activity to reach out. Otherwise, it's, you're not necessarily just gonna go and reach out and, so, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely a, can be a challenge.
Yeah, but sharing stories do, does help, yeah, and then creating our story together.
And as we go through our community discussions, we need to be able to, to take that into account with the different feedback that we get and, you know, telling the story and in the ways that we need to tell it, so.
Telling stories and hearing stories.
And listening.
Yeah, really listening to understand, you know, from so many different perspectives and so many, um, yeah, experiences, yeah.
All right. Good discussion. We, uh, we'll continue through with the rest of the.
Did you guys have?
Yeah, do you guys have any? That's fair, that's, that's fair, no issue, I hate to put you on the spot, but we wanna ask.
Thank you for asking.
All right, anything else? Uh, next agenda, December budget starts, so we'll, we'll actually be meeting before the the next, uh, we'll be meeting before the next cal- scheduled meeting anyway, so.
Twice.
Just prepare twice before that.
November twenty ninth, December sixth.
I thought the twenty ninth was just getting the information out to us.
Monday, the twenty seventh.
Oh, Monday, okay, all right, yeah, okay. So we'll meet a couple of times, make sure that gets on the calendar because that'll not be a normal thing. So December will be pretty busy. And then, uh, we will be back, all right, anything else?
I will. Do I need to, do we need to talk about the survey that you put out?
Oh, um.
Should we talk about it December or do we?
We can, yeah, we might put some time on the agenda to to talk about that. That was the, the superintendent survey that we did now, I think, three years ago?
Okay.
Three years ago, I think we decided it was three years ago. Um, just to get that same feedback again, we can talk about format and structure, you and I can talk a little bit, we got.
Yeah.
A little bit of philosophical things we can, we could chat about as well, um, because I'll be curious. But I would like, if you could, to review questions, make sure we hit them all. I think it's the same survey that we sent out twice now. So I just wanna make sure it's the same one, so we get the same basic.
Do we have a?
I think.
Google document just to review the questions and see if you need to.
Yeah, I. I sent it out, I don't remember, did I send out the document or did I send out the?
Sent out a Google doc and it was a.
Okay.
I didn't know if I was supposed to edit or I was like, am I supposed to answer this or, and that's why I wrote back.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, that's good. I I know you do email now, these guys all do text, so I gotta, I gotta communicate differently depending on who I'm communicating with, so.
Oh, I can go text, I I, I'm cool with that.
It's harder to send a Google form on text.
Yeah, I'm an old, I'm an old dog, I'll learn, I'll learn some new tricks. Or point in the right direction anyway, go, go read your email. All right, um, so I think with that, I would, uh, we have no executive session today. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, beautiful, thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, we got some signatures we need here from.
Okay. When did you send that?
Thank you Colin, appreciate it.
When did you send the, um?
We're going together, yeah.
That's gonna cover it.